All right, we'll move straight into the regularly scheduled committee, the whole meeting this evening. Again, we'll start with the call, well, call to order, but then we'll skip the pledge, and we'll take the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heims.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
All right, public participation, again, public comment, two-minute opportunity. Is there anybody in the public that would wish to address the board this evening? Hearing none. I'll move on to items to discussion. Item A, the Boulder Hill Project website. And with that, I'll turn it over to...
I think Engineer Wallers is going to handle this one.
We, I think we talked about this a while back, but given the magnitude of the Boulder Hill construction project, we thought that it would be a good idea to provide a website specific to the project that the residents could go to to get information from time to time as the project went forward. Currently, the website is not live, so this is a demo tonight. Your packet gives the web address that will be used. It's www.boulderhillwatermaine.com. It's a specific web address only for this project, and when the project's concluded, we'll take it down and it'll be gone. So on it is some general information. I'm just going to toggle through it kind of quick, but you can get the report on the scope, you'll be able to get the current construction schedule that was provided by the contractor, and it'll be updated as we get updates, it'll be posted. It indicates that we're going to start construction the week of July 1st. We'll also have on there the map of the project. So we're starting, obviously, with Contract A, so that's the location of the project. We have a number of tree removals and replacements that are going to be ongoing, so we have a section on the website that covers the tree and the landscaping issues. And the residents who have a tree that's being removed in their right-of-way have the option to get a replacement tree, and they can go on the website to get the selection that was provided, and this was through the village's arborist. We've got eight trees to select from, and it gives them a little information about the tree. And we've gone door-to-door to hand out the, what we call is our tree waiver, which indicates that they'll get a replacement tree, but it would be replaced in their private property and not in the right-of-way. And some of you may recall, some of the rights-of-way in Boulder Hill are reasonably narrow, and so locating anything in the parkway is difficult and you usually run into a tree. So we thought that, and some of those trees are at kind of the end of their design life, and so we're getting new trees, but they'll be on private property if they would like. You don't have to accept a tree if you don't want to. So it gives them a little bit of information about the trees, and there's also some provision in there if you had private landscaping in the parkway, like if you put a, edging around a tree well or whatever, there's a way for that to be moved by the contractor and put into your yard, and so there's information on that. And again, we're not relying only on the website, it's just additional information for people that they can go to. We have the maps that, again, are going to be in there for Contracts A, B, and C that are listed, and so when you get to Contract B, you'll have a new map and that sort of thing. And construction updates, then, we'll be issuing actually a weekly update as construction starts, and it'll be posted out here. For now, we just list the current construction schedule that was posted at the pre-con meeting. And then we have a notifications page, and if you want to, you can sign up for email alerts that we'll send out, and then we will also be posting any notifications that come up from time to time, so that'll be there for people to look at. We've also got our frequently asked questions, that's kind of a carryover from the public open house that we had, just there for people to look at if they're interested. And then last, we have Contact Us page where you can make a general inquiry. You sign in, you can also sign up for email alerts here, but you can choose whether it's general construction, something about trees, schedule, water loss, what it might be, and then that gets sent to Mike's office, to our office, and then we say that we'll respond in one to three business days. And then we also have posted on the website contact information for our folks that'll be handling construction observation, Mike's office, the Township Road District, and Fox Metro Water Reclamation District. So, again, it's just kind of a place where the residents can get information on the project as it's going forward, and we'll try to keep it updated, you know, frequently, and like I say, we'll post the weekly updates, and that's something that we've done internally in the village. We issue weekly construction updates to Public Works and Police, mainly so that they can keep track of whether there's going to be construction on the weekend or other places. This is a little bit different, obviously, because outside of our municipal boundary, the patrol activities out there is the sheriff's police, but we thought, again, it would just be good to have this information available for the residents of Boulder Hill. So that's the plan, and if it meets with your approval, we would go live tomorrow, and obviously, it won't really start in earnest until after July 1st, but, you know, we think it'll be a good tool going forward, so be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. That's awesome. Are there any questions of Engineer Wallers at this point? The one thought that I had that I know you guys are coordinating with the Park District, with the Civic Center Park there, I know that the 4th of July weekend or just in general, there's a lot of on-street parking in that area.
We have, we're not going to, we've actually delayed construction in the area of the Ashland Pool till after Labor Day. That doesn't exactly show up on the schedule, that has been called out in the contract documents. So we're trying to, as much as we can, minimize, you know, conflicts like that, but, you know, inevitably, I'm sure things will come up, we'll just try to be as flexible as we can in responding to problems if they do arise.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on this evening to Item B, which is the Village Manager/Administrator Ordinance. If you recall, we tabled this on May 28th. So the premise here is that, as I open up to this, this is, obviously, this is a board-driven item, so there's no staff update on this. The, a little bit of history on this, or at least you'll see in your packet, we have our ordinance that was approved last, at some point last year. This is not it. Okay. So we have two ordinances that used to exist. There was the ordinance from 2000, and then an ordinance shortly after that, in 2002. Just recently, the last board created a new ordinance that currently exists today that's not included in your packet. The reason being for that is a lot of the discussions, wait, it is in your packet, in August of 2011. So the premise here is, I know that a majority of the board wanted to discuss that ordinance, either that ordinance publicly, or start with our base that we had for the last 12 years, 10 years, and move forward with that. I know there's some items in both of these that we like and don't like, so now's the opportunity for us to discuss that publicly. Are there any comments or things that you like about one ordinance or the other? We can direct staff to draft up a new ordinance if that's our wish and move forward accordingly.
I think, just for ease of discussion, if we could, on the 2011 ordinance, if we could just go through, I guess, A, B, C, all the way through, and kind of discuss what we like, what we don't like, and we have the other two ordinances here that we can look at, I mean, unless someone else has a better way.
I had the opposite thought, that we'd start with our 2000, 2002. Those are the ones that are pretty brief in how they're spelled out. The, I was on the board when this 2011 one was approved. There are some things in here that are good, there are some things in here that I'm not sure exactly what they might mean or imply. So we can start with one or the other, it's completely up to you guys. I'd like to start with what we have, or you were also provided, I think, at the last, the May 28th meeting, with several other municipalities and the ordinance that they have that govern the Village Manager/Administrator, so it's completely up to you. And we're not here tonight to draft an ordinance, we're here to say X, Y, and Z makes sense to us, and our attorneys will draft the language.
Okay, I'll get this thing started. First off, I'd like to see the ordinance change, I guess, the name from Village Administrator to Village Manager. I don't see that it makes a whole lot of difference. I don't, I think that they're one in the same. Quite honestly, manager is a little bit easier to say, and the Village Board is not managers. That's up to the Village Manager. So that's the first issue that I have with the 2011 ordinance, I'd like to see a change to Village Manager. I'd like to see the position change to Village Manager.
One thing that I talked about previously, I have my nice list here, is the hiring and firing. Previously in the village, all department heads reported directly to the Village Administrator, Village Manager, and in the 2011 version, that was kind of revised such that everybody reported to the board. And having lived on that for a year, and I felt strongly then, and I still feel strongly, that we need one CAO or Chief Administrative Person in the village, so I'd like to see us return to what's in our 2000 and what other municipalities, I believe, are doing in that the manager, everybody reports to the manager, and the manager has direct authority over hiring and firing of all village employees. So I don't know what...
I would agree with that.
I think that's back to the 2002 where you have the manager also have the authority to spend $10,000 without approval, or up to. I would like to at least go back to that whole ordinance, and if somebody that had good intentions on the 2011 want to add something to the 2002, like you said, I would have no trouble with that. There's an awful lot of if, ands, and taking account into bargaining, days, filing, all this stuff. I'd like to see you go back to the other version, which is very simple.
I guess my comment, Danny, on that is that, you know, they took away the power for the Village Manager to enter into a contract of $10,000 or less, and they forced everything to go to the Village Board. And I think in certain instances, that may cause delays in us getting the best available pricing, or it may limit some of the possibilities that we have. So I'm going to ask the department heads, are there ever instances where you believe where having to bring everything before the Village Board could cause a potential delay or we could miss an opportunity? To, for example, to purchase, and I understand it's only $10,000, but say if we had to purchase a piece of equipment that was less than $10,000. If we find one that fits our criteria, and you have to bring it before the Village Board, the next Village Board meeting could be, as I understand the ordinance as it is now, the next Village Board meeting could be two weeks away, and you may miss out on that. And it doesn't matter if it's equipment for the Police Department, or equipment for Public Works, or whatever. I think that we've got to put our faith in the Village Manager and the department heads, that they're going to do their jobs and do their jobs effectively, and trust in that. And if there's a violation of that trust, the trustees will deal with it. But the trustees are not here to micromanage the Village Manager and the heads of the departments.
I think the other thing is, when you have something like a $6,000 bill from Viking Chemical for the water plant, and it's an automatic, I mean, they're the only ones who use it, and then you have to wait until we approve it when, you know, it's just something that is standard. It's not, I think, I think always in the past, things were brought up even under $10,000 if it was unusual, where it was the routine stuff. I think even the sidewalk repair, if I remember, was stopped and made longer, wasn't it sidewalk repair, or was it the black topping? Or something, it was something we had to wait for because...
We did start bringing that to the board several years ago, that contract.
It was a delay last fall on something that was supposed to be done, and we had to wait until the next board meeting to get it...
Right.
...okayed.
Well, I think what you're talking about, if I remember, Danny, and if I remember correctly, you agree too, that guy wasn't qualified to do some of the work he was doing.
Oh, I agree with that one, yeah, I said that too.
And that's why it was held up.
Yeah, and that was a, I remember the situation, that was a little bit different from that, but I agree. Something else that I'd like, I have my long list, I'll just go through those real quick of different ordinances that I saw, that, things that I liked, you guys can comment on these. I would like the ordinance to say that the administrator should prepare annually the budget and the capital improvement program and present to the board, just so it's in there. There are some things that we did for the last 10 or 12 years that were implied, it might be nice if we actually codify that. The other thing would be advise the board on pending decisions of public policy. So numerous times over the last few years, we've asked staff for their opinion on a decision that we're going to make, and I'd like that to be in there, so we convey to Jeff that we expect his opinion on public policy issues. The other thing would be to specifically call out that the administrator or manager is responsible for all collective bargaining proceedings for the village, and then obviously prepare that for consideration and approval by the board. Another thing that we've done over the years is appoint the acting administrator in his absence. I'd like that to be in there and spelled out, that if he's not going to be here, that he has the authority to then appoint the acting administrator, currently it's not in there. And then oversee all HR functions, kind of along with that is coordinate and conduct all employee annual performance evaluations, again, an implied thing.
I agree.
And oversee, oversee the maintenance of real and personal property. Basically, spelling out clearly that the administrator is the chief official, and I think things can run pretty smoothly with the board here, so are there any comments on any of those items? Anything else to add, any?
I'd just like to keep it as administrator, not manager. Like, it's a matter of opinion, everybody has their own opinion.
Andy, you have a thought on the...
I do. There is, in Illinois, a form of government called Village Manager Form of Government, and we do not have it. We have a Village Administrator Form of Government with trustees. Speak to the issue.
Not exactly. What you're talking about is actually a form of government, but it doesn't relate to this type of employment situation and who you employ. You can have a Village Manager or a Village Trustee, I mean, a Village Administrator, as a village form of government, and in either title you use, they have whatever powers you give them in your ordinance.
The people who receive correspondence and business cards and communication from that person have no way of knowing what they do and do not have in terms of responsibility if they use that title.
That's correct. Whichever title is used, their powers are limited by your ordinance. The manager form of government, though, is a separate statutory form, which really refers to the, in essence, the mayor, not the employee who is either Village Administrator or Village Manager.
Council Manager Form of Government.
Right.
And it specifically calls that person a manager.
Correct, but it's a totally different form of government than a village.
That's my point, exactly.
And it's not, well, I mean, you can use whatever, whichever title, I guess what I'm trying to say is that as a village, you can use whichever title is convenient for you in this employment situation.
So your thought is that it could be confusing if somebody were to think that that would be, that's our form of government?
Yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
It could be said the other way, too, because there's administrators, you know, people could be confused with that is. And it's around here, you have administrators, you have managers, but it's the same form of government almost all around here now. The old manager with, was backed like Aurora had it, where everybody went after a certain position.
So you want to change it to manager or keep it?
I like that 2002, there's nothing wrong with it, it's brief. Add a few things and...
I believe that, Matt, you had mentioned the filling of vacant staff positions not covered by the Board of Police Commissioners. I know our current ordinance from 2011 says requires approval of the Board of Trustees, and I think that you had made, mentioned that you want that power to go back to the Village Manager for the hiring and firing.
Budgeted staff positions.
Okay.
And Oswego, I think, has it so that department heads would come to the board, and we could do it that way. I've talked to Jeff about that, I won't speak for him, but I think his intention would be to bring that stuff to us, but we could also put that in the ordinance. Have you felt strongly one way or the other?
I think there's a point to be made, when a person leaves an organization, especially if they've been there for 10, 15, 20 years, that's a moment when you can rethink your organizational structure. Maybe there are positions that could have been combined, but we weren't going to do it because we had those two people in place already. Maybe the skill set required for that job has changed dramatically, maybe the need for that job has changed dramatically. So as a board, I would not give away your participation in that early stage of now what do we do for some benefit that I don't comprehend. There's nothing wrong with the board being involved in discussion about what organizational structure are we going to have, how many employees are we going to have, and just because this person is leaving, do we carbon copy that and find another one just like them, or do we see that as a moment to rethink what we're doing? We're talking about four, five, six minutes of conversation, I don't see the problem that we're solving relative to the opportunity to do something better.
And I agree with your point, I think that with regards to organizational structure, like, you know, we could be in a situation where if one person left, we reorganize a whole department, I think that that's a board-level discussion.
I think a lot of that is policy.
That's, that's...
Basically, that's policy, that's what we're all sitting here for, is policy, but to turn around and, because Dan wants a part-time policeman, he has to bring a name of a retired Aurora policeman that is 30 years in, and for $17 an hour, we got to okay the guy, I think is ridiculous. I mean, he's got a lot more information about the guy than we would, and something like that, you're not going to hire a full-time one, probably, it's his discretion on the part-time, how many to have, so it's policy. And I think the policy is fine, if, like Stan says, you're going to change something, then we change the policy and say we're not going that direction, don't hire somebody.
Right.
But at the same time, I think for us to piddle around with who works part-time for Mike and who works part-time for Dan and that, I don't see any need for it.
Yeah, and that's, we were having, we were hiring in dispatch recently, I know that we may or may not be understaffed right now, and that's, was a concern for me, is that we were waiting for a meeting to bring a name, waiting for a meeting, and same thing when we're in the thick of our growing season, to have to bring a name back, or if you lost somebody during a snowstorm, not lost somebody, if you needed to hire a new employee, those delays, I think, are unnecessary. If the position is budgeted and vacant, and that's been the policy and the direction of the board, then I think it's, I think we ought to give that authority to our department heads to manage their department accordingly, so...
Maybe we'd have some common ground at retaining for the board approval at the department head level.
I'm not opposed to that.
I would agree with that.
I think that's what we had it in the 2002, or at least that's the way we've always done it since I've been here, that the name was brought to us, and like Dan was, name was brought to us, and he was a department head. And I think that was, because that's policy, basically, as far as what it was, and...
There's another additional comment I would make, and then I'll let it go. I have enjoyed hearing about the people that we're hiring, and why we chose to hire them, and getting to know their names, and where they came from, and why they're well-suited to that position. For the two or three minutes that that takes, I've enjoyed it, I felt like I benefited from it, and I didn't feel like I was looking over somebody's shoulder, I felt like I was part of a process that the public elected me to participate in.
And we could still...
We can still do that, can't we?
I actually, I said that in there, that I appreciate when, in those situations, when we have a little update and know what's going on.
I think that's the, I don't think we have to do it in executive session like it's a secret. Elizabeth won that award, I mean, that's something that we ought to tell the world about rather than...
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
The, on Item C on the 2011 ordinance, it says to supervise and assume responsibility for the daily operation of all departments and divisions within the Village of Montgomery. And when I look at the 2000 ordinance, it says to exercise control and daily operation of all departments and divisions within the Village of Montgomery. I don't see what the difference is. Why was it changed? I don't see, we've changed a few words.
I think that's why, the word "control" versus "supervised." I think the discussion we just had about the caliber of our department heads suggests that we don't need a village administrator that's going to control those departments, but rather enable them and work with them.
No, it used to be.
Okay.
Excuse me, go ahead.
I'll agree with Pete, or with Stan, sorry, Pete, go ahead.
I remember it used to be, the mayor and the trustee sat on, when we hired John DeRozier, when we hired Jeff, we sat in and talked, everybody that came in, we interviewed, and then we picked down the three, and then two, and then that's how we went. And I think that's the right way to do it. It's my opinion.
And I talked to Jeff about that briefly, and I think that was, if that's the desire of the board, we could have some board involvement in that for department heads.
I would agree with, I would agree with that.
But I don't think we had Open Meeting Act to worry about back then, but we do now, so, but that's, I don't think that's something that'll end up being in the ordinance, but it's something that we can...
On the 2011 ordinance, on D, I had, there, it said, made mention to the Finance Committee, and we don't have committees anymore, do we?
Well, you still have the committee, Jeff.
Right.
Technically, we still have the committee, it doesn't meet.
Okay.
That would be the...
But you know, I think, instead of having a committee hold all the time, I think it's better, it's my personal opinion, have each individual committee, so you got three people on that committee, or four.
Separately?
Yeah. I mean, I think you get things done better that way. Otherwise, you're bringing everything together at one meeting.
Okay.
E, F, G, and H of the 2011 ordinance, I have no problems with, they're from the I really discusses, it's going to, as I understand it, evaluate the village's typical responsibilities. I have no problem with I, does anyone else?
So you want all of these things added in to the ordinance?
Well, as I look through the 2011 ordinance, I, we've kind of gone down... Well, as I look through the 2011 ordinance, I, we've kind of gone down the letters, the items and stuff. I have no problem with E, I have no problem with F, I have no problem with G, I have no problem with H. I'd like to see K eliminated. K is kind of reiterating the ethics as far as the influence election, board clerk commission, or any position in the Village of Montgomery. I would agree with that. But that is part of the, as it states here, Article VII Ethics. It shouldn't have to be re-mentioned. If it's already in there and that individual violates it, then it's, it's an issue.
So what are the letters? It sounds like you like all the letters in the 2011 ordinance?
No. I, I don't like all the letters in the 2011 ordinance. I have problems with B, C, D, J, K.
What's H?
They're little, H is reserved. It just says reserved, and I'm okay with that.
Nice. Do you guys have any thoughts on these? I, honestly, I didn't start with the 2011 ordinance, I started with the base one. Had my comments to add in, what we wanted to add in. If there's anything beyond that in these letters that you feel is pertinent. And trying not to muddy the waters with too much of the same repetitive stuff. HR, hiring and firing, spending, organizational, collective bargaining, kind of some of the key issues hit on, so. Glad Stan?
I did have a comment about M. Our ordinance stands alone in referencing that, and I think for good reason. And in fact, I think we might add a phrase about specifying the level of step where we are. Essentially, it's indicating that the administrator should notify the board when a grievance has been filed and very quickly at that point. Not that we're necessarily going to get involved in it, but I think we need to know that. And I think our employees need to have the comfort of knowing that the board's not in the dark about a grievance they've just filed.
I would agree with that.
How many grievances? I mean, at one time, we had like thirty a day, didn't we? Right?
Correct, a few years ago.
Very minimal type.
Yeah, we, we recently had one in three years. And that didn't go anywhere, though.
Is your point that we don't have many or...
No, the point was back then, we had like thirty in one day.
We're making good progress, then.
I mean, it was, it was like stupid thing, stupid little grievances that what did I care if the guy, somebody ran over the guy's lawn or something like that, at his, or next to his car or something like that?
We're talking about a union grievance here, not a public grievance, a union grievance. That's a formal document.
That's what I mean. There were formal grievances by the police department when we were doing it. And I think even Public Works, it was just, that was a bad example. It was like having the coffee water not hot enough or something like that. I mean, they filed all those, I couldn't care less about that when they're doing thirty a day. I mean, and that's what they were doing and...
Does the union steward sign those grievances?
The president of the union does, yes.
So if they're not frivolous in that fellow's mind, I'd like to know about them, too. He took the time to sign the grievance? He took the time to write it up? Why would you call it frivolous?
If there's thirty a day or whatever, I'd call it frivolous. It was during the, they were just making stuff up. You can ask both, both people. This is part of the union maybe, and I don't mind if they do it, but why do I have to know if the coffee wasn't hot when these guys can handle that? I guess that's my idea.
Because the stewardship of our union agreements rests with the Board of Directors.
What?
The Board of Directors is responsible for the union contract. We sign it. It's ours, it's our contract.
What has that got to do with agreement? I don't mind a grievance that's, like Dan said, one and whatever, but when come, it's part of the union negotiations is when it gets closed, they might file thirty in a row or something. And to me, that's making stuff up. I mean, I don't care less about that.
Would our village attorney care to offer a comment?
No, this is a policy decision as to whether you want to be notified if a grievance is filed. Certainly, there are times when frivolous grievances are filed and there are times when there are grievances that may have a significant impact, depending on what the ruling is ultimately on the grievance. But it's purely a policy decision if you want to be notified every time a union grievance is filed.
There are three steps in our contract, level one, level two, level three?
I'm not, by recollection, but there's usually three and sometimes four.
So that was my comment, that in addition to wanting to be notified, we could be very specific about at what level we want to be notified. Perhaps level two and three.
I see your point as far as, you know, what, what may be considered frivolous to one person may not be considered frivolous to the other. And at what point, with, and thankfully, we're not getting that many grievances. But at what point, or where's that deciding line? And if this is considered frivolous, so we're not going to let the village board know. This is considered a major, and I get, I understand what you're saying. Okay.
Maybe, maybe a solution...
Well, I was just going to come in. I, by memory, I can't tell you exactly what the steps are, but typically in a union contract, you're going to see, step one is very often just a consultation with supervisor, it's a verbal. It may go to a written for step two, usually answered by the immediate supervisor. You know, a step three may go beyond that, depending on the contract, upper level, and ultimately to arbitration. So, you know, maybe one of the things you want to do, as you mentioned, is pick a level at which you want to be notified. If it goes beyond a certain point, then you want that notice. And that's just a, again, it's a policy decision for the board.
I have no problem with step three, but the other two, which we did, or was discussed, isn't worth the time. It isn't my, worth my time for all the paper that everybody, or phone calls that everybody have to make to tell you how many a day they're getting.
Maybe a solution to this problem would be, obviously, these are all public record. We could, and I don't know if staff keeps a binder of these things available at Village Hall. He could have, Jeff could have a binder. I guess my, my concern with this is I don't want to put something in here that puts the five days on here that basically adds another task that if he doesn't, if he does this on the sixth day, then I guess he violated the ordinance. I'd like him to use his discretion on, this is a class one, but this is a big deal. This is going to be a problem. I'd like to know about that. If it's a minor issue that's going to be resolved and necessarily, I don't need to get another email about that. So maybe he can, as a policy, we can tell him that we would like to have a binder available for our review if we so choose. If, at your discretion, you feel like we need to know about something, and I hope that he does this and our department has with everything. If there's something that we need to know about, like the chief calling us on Saturday with an issue, then we need to know about it. And I'd like giving them the flexibility to make that judgment call on our behalf. And that's why we have them. So we could, we can talk about that one more tonight or at another time if you guys choose.
We can also tweak the language a little bit so that maybe it's a little, it's not violated super easily, but you can provide the policy direction to the administrator at that time.
It's the desire of the board, something like that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And the only other thing that I'd like to get a consensus about or discuss is if we're going to allow the village manager to enter into a contract, what value contract are we going to let the village manager enter into? You know, like, like Denny had said earlier, I'm comfortable with the ten thousand, I'm comfortable with going above the ten thousand. But, you know, once again, it, we, we're relying on the, the individual who we've selected to be the village manager to, to do the best possible job that he can do. And I think I don't want to limit or handcuff his options when it comes to, to small contracts.
Point of order. Which of these items discusses a spending limit?
That's the 2002 ordinance.
It's, no, all right.
I think Director Povens had a comment.
I do, thank you President Brawley. From a staff perspective, I would certainly encourage the board to consider raising that limit from ten thousand dollars to possibly twenty thousand dollars. That's, that's a lot of money, no doubt about it. But for reference, we've talked a lot about trees. To purchase and pay someone to plant trees, we can do about thirty of them for ten thousand dollars. And we have, the cost of doing business and operating this village is going up and it's expensive to do. So it would certainly help streamline our operations and I believe help us be more responsive should the board decide to raise that, well, reinstate the administrator slash manager's authority to sign those contracts and to do so to a higher value. And just so the board and the public is aware, for, for those agreements under whatever threshold gets decided, there has been a standing internal policy on getting a minimum number of quotes. So when we were under the ten thousand dollar maximum, if you had an item that was under one thousand dollars, you had to get one quote. If it was between a thousand and ten thousand, we had to get three written quotes. So there's still the checks and balances that we're not spending foolishly, overlooking some potential savings just in the interest of speeding things up. So again, this, again, to make the board aware and the public aware that it's not just, hey, I need twenty thousand dollars worth of trees, sign this.
And I would add that, this would apply to items in the offer as a budget. So trees might be as a good example, you only have access of ten thousand dollars budgeted for that function, so it would not apply if there was something outside of that.
And that's my only concern, is that it be a budgeted item like the, the striping? I think that's twenty thousand every year, or we max out at that, or maybe I'm wrong. But last few years, you've been, you've come back to the board to approve that contract when they do a max, they do, it's a per foot striping, and that's not really policy if it's in the budget, so. I spoke adamantly about the twenty thousand before, about moving up to that, just to streamline our process, so I would not be opposed to that. In fact, I would support that with three quotes, that we give him that flexibility. It doesn't mean that he can, Jeff can turn around the next day and bring all contracts to us that he is uncomfortable signing, and I would encourage him to do that.
I think they all have to come to us sooner or later. I think, like Mike said, the check and balances have been in there. At the same time, we've never had Dan or Mike come in like one for nine thousand, a week later, another nine, I mean, we've always had it above board and with the checks and balances. You're right, twenty thousand, even some of our chemical bills have been higher, that sludge removal, you know, all of it's in the budget, so it's all going to be open in a way.
I will bring whatever level of contract to the board that the board decides they want to see. I have no problems with that or issues with that. Again, I, I think there's some validity, though, to the argument that at some level, you start to unnecessarily slow down the process without an offsetting gain in value or benefit to the village. That's my point, so.
Thank you. Any other comments on this tonight? I think we had a good discussion, the chief has a comment.
Yes, thank you. I also agree with Director Public Works, Mike Povens. Especially in the summertime when we canceled the first Monday board meeting, now we're, now we might have to wait anywhere from four to five weeks, depending on when you, when you get that. Because if you don't get it on the agenda for, for example, like the 24th of June, now you have to wait five weeks to get that on the agenda to, to get that approved at the end of the year. So I, or end of July. So I, in answering trustee Youngerman's question earlier, I do support increasing that also. And coming here at the end of the month, I have an agreement for copiers that includes a five-year agreement through a lease, so we have to discuss that, which is, it's not more than ten thousand dollars a year, but it's a, it's a multi-year contract, which is over ten grand, but it's five years, sixty months. And it's all budgeted, so that, that discussion needs to be had also. Thank you.
Stan?
When we were developing this ordinance under the advice of the village attorney during that discussion, we created a separate ordinance for spending authority. And part of the reasoning there was that that number and that process might be more volatile than the village manager's ordinance itself. And his suggestion to us was that we probably only want to revisit this village manager ordinance or village administrator ordinance every few years. In fact, it'd been more than a decade since we'd looked at it in 2011. So it may still be wise to not incorporate the spending issue into this ordinance, but to schedule a discussion of our current spending ordinance for a future meeting.
Can I get a copy of the spending ordinances? I'm not familiar.
You can do it either way. You can have it either in, in the powers that you grant and then it's there, and you are correct, it's, in either event, if you're going to modify it, it's, it's an ordinance change, whether you're changing the separate ordinance that gives spending authority and you're looking at it annually, for example, or whether you change the village administrator ordinance, either way. So it's your choice.
Well, currently, I believe that this 2002, the spending authority was likely repealed with our 2011, so there currently is no authority, correct me if I'm wrong.
Separate ordinance.
I've never seen a spending ordinance. Maybe I'm wrong, but I'd like to get a copy if you can, throw it in my mailbox.
We can do that. Matt's correct, there was an ordinance and it was repealed with the changes in 2011.
So maybe staff can compile, compile the list of our concerns, kind of give that a draft and have our attorneys review that, and we can discuss it at a future meeting? Is that agreeable? If you guys have any additional thoughts between now and then, please, either email them or call me or direct them to staff. Okay, with that, we'll move on. Plant Commission, we don't have any recommendations this evening. There is a special plant commission meeting for Thursday of this week at 7:00 PM. So I'll encourage everybody to either attend that or check with staff after that meeting. And we'll move on to department updates, and I'll start with the chief.
Thank you, Village President. This Saturday, Sergeant Palco will receive the Rising Shield Award at the Summer Conference of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. The dinner costs fifty dollars each. If you're still interested, I still will be able to get tickets by end of business tomorrow. Thank you.
Excellent. Director Povens?
Thank you, President Brawley. Our tree planting program is underway, we've spoken about this at several previous meetings. So JPC is working with EdPAP for harvest to select sites and begin planting trees. We hope to have about half of our annual allotment planted by the end of this month. Might be a little tight, we're getting close. If you recall, we're targeting approximately 125 trees to be planted, purchased and planted this year. Just a quick update, our temporary employee situation is working out very well. They've been responsible for the majority, I would say, all of the mowing on the village maintained sites outside of the mowing contract that we use in some of the subdivisions, et cetera. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
Excellent. Thank you. And then I'll turn it over to Jamie.
Thank you, I do have a couple items. First, I wanted to mention, building activity continues to be strong. We are seeing some more renovations. The Burger King on Douglas Road submitted plans today for a complete sort of remodel slash relook, so we're excited about that. And Sam's Club permits are pretty much ready to be picked up now. The comprehensive plan, the community workshop, has been rescheduled for June 27th. So it is an east side workshop, however, all residents are welcome to attend that that weren't able to make the west side workshop. So I encourage every, everybody to attend that. We're also putting together the stakeholder meetings for June 26th and 27th with our consultants, so they'll be here all day those days doing interviews. If anybody has any last minute thoughts on any people who might be good to interview, please let me know. The TIF project, as you'll recall... The TIF project, as you'll recall, the board discussed the eligibility study and findings at the last board meeting. We are planning on having that on the agenda for June 24th. So the Business Climate Enhancement Committee kind of started this whole process with this idea about Orchard Road, and with the MEDC, so we'll be kind of culminating that process if the board chooses to move forward with that agreement. Couple new projects that we're working on in community development. We're working with several, just several customer service related items. One specifically related to Fairfield Way, with the HOA was dissolved, and there's some outstanding money. So a few things that are kind of outside the norm that we're trying to help out with. And we're also looking at applying for CMAP's Local Technical Assistance Program, for a rewrite of our subdivision control ordinance, as a follow-up to our comprehensive plan, as well as a grant from the RTA, which would potentially implement recommendations from our TOD plan. So we're working on those applications. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Move on. Any newer unfinished business this evening? Stan?
Comment for Jamie, I wonder if we could contact the post office again? I wonder if we could contact the post office again about getting a mailbox sited in the west side of town, which is, there are no mailboxes at all west of Orchard Road.
Yes, and we certainly can. He did tell us pretty flat out no the last time, and that any mailbox, as well as any townhome complex with the slots, can serve as outgoing mail. But I, we certainly can follow up and try that. They've been trying to decrease the post boxes.
There's one on Alcott Road that is on the wrong side of the road. If you're driving your car, you can't legally put mail in that box with your car going in the wrong direction. That would be a candidate for moving, and it would be a push for them then, in terms of number of boxes. I've often wondered who on earth, other than the postal carrier with their wheel on the wrong side, could even use that box.
Follow up again.
Remind them of that, maybe. And if you get a flat out no one more time, I think we might explore their organizational chart.
I don't know who's above the postmaster.
Oh, they're there.
I'm going to touch on an item that Pete had brought up at the beginning of the meeting. I know that my wife and I have received calls saying that our house has received hail damage from this recent storm. I think five pieces of hail hit our house, and all of a sudden, we're receiving calls saying, hey, you know, we've seen hail damage on your house, you can get a new roof. Now there's a door knocker that was on our door the other night. And to touch on a topic that Stan has brought up before, the little bags with the one rock, they're still coming around. And I don't think I can throw it back at the car, but you're right, I consider it litter. And they, they just don't seem to get it. Is there anything that can be done about that?
Chief, do you want to answer that?
Yes. If you can, what I've noticed in the last couple of years, that the phone numbers and the names have changed. We've had probably six different names and same phone numbers, but we will contact the phone company and find the owner. With the exception of them, us seeing them throw it out the window, we try to get them to admit that, and then we'll give them a notice to appear in court. There are some other issues with soliciting that are pending, so we should look at that.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
If I could follow on his comment. If I could follow on his comment, we had bags tossed in our neighborhood last Friday night, last Saturday morning, and last Sunday morning, or late Saturday night. So we had three sets of those bags with rocks and flyers in them in our neighborhood in one weekend alone. I didn't have the heart to pester Dan about it.
Oh, no, feel free. Yeah, I don't have a problem.
We did talk at one point about issuing a letter from, a very official letter from our village, saying we won't tolerate that, and maybe that's a good first step, too.
And just to the question, I know that we had received some heavy rain recently with some of the storms and stuff that we had received. This was after the initial six inches downpour that we had received that caused the flooding. With the recent rains that we've had, have we had any more flooding issues anyplace?
Yeah, I was out of town last Wednesday, you referring to those rains? But the reports from our supervisors were, no, we did not have any damage. Engineer Wallers?
And I was also on Wednesday, so I didn't visually see it, but I did drive by the ride away, and didn't see any standing.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? There's no executive session in this meeting, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a second?
Second.
Take your role, please.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Young.
Yes.
Trustee Ben.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Trustee Lee.